Good evening, all in this meeting. I'm the chairman of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you will please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Let me God who's created us live in community and seek for that which is good for all of us who live here. Guide us in making decisions that the welfare of all may be prospered in your name glorified. For it's your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Will you all join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of honor and justice, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Keely, the roll please.
Carrie Hodges, Ward 1, here. Jay Step, Ward 2. Louis Tonsmore, Ward 3.
Right here.
Lindsey McDaniel, Ward 4. Diane Tate, Ward 5, here. Taffreyan, Ward 6.
Here. Thank you Connie. Our first order of business is the approval of our meeting minutes from the September 1st meeting. And council, you've had these well in advance, and tonight had an opportunity to look them over. And right now would be an opportunity to make any edits, additions, deletions, corrections, and if there are none, a motion would be...
Mayor, I didn't see any corrections or additions or deletions. Make a motion to approve.
Second. I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We have a couple of proclamations we get to start with this evening, and the first one is, well, it's National Surgical Technologist Week. We have Nicole here representing the organization. I'm going to read this proclamation, and I'm going to be happy to present this to you. It simply says that whereas for over sixty years surgical technology has grown to meet the ever-increasing demand for well-educated, highly skilled, and versatile surgical technologists, and surgical technologists are entrusted with the lives and well-being of patients that provide a critical service during surgical procedures. Over ninety thousand surgical technologists nationwide are an integral part of the surgical team committed to providing the highest quality of surgical care to patients. Surgical technologists are responsible for the application of sterile and a septic technique in the operating room, ensuring the equipment functions properly and facilitating safe and effective conduct during invasive surgical procedures. Surgical technologists strive to prevent life-threatening surgical site infections and maximize patient safety. Certified surgical technologists graduate from an accredited program and receive certification conferred by the National Board of Surgical Technology and surgical assisting based upon passage of the national examination. And whereas the surgical technologist motto...
Agar primo.
Thank you very much. Agar primo, the patient first, reflects the total commitment to patient safety and advocacy. Whereas the people of Georgia are honored to join with our nation in recognizing National Surgical Technologist Week. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Santini, Mayor of the City of Cartersville, do hereby proclaim September 18th through 24th, 2016 as Surgical Technologist Week in the City of Cartersville, and urge all my fellow citizens to join me in acknowledging the important role of surgical technologists in the care and recovery of their patients. We honor these men and women. Would you like to say a few words about your organization?
I do. Surgical technologists, most of you know us as the people that pass instruments, but you don't know that we are responsible for every piece of equipment, every instrument used, from opening, prepping, and draping, to the last stitch that goes in or Band-Aids. We make sure everything is present. We make sure that everything is opened sterilely. We receive medications from the nurse. We are alongside the doctor for every step of that surgical procedure to make sure that everything is accounted for in the beginning as well as the end. We position the patients. We prep them, and like I said, we apply that sometimes, that final Band-Aid that goes on the patient. And it is very important to us that the patient is safe and comfortable throughout their procedures. Sometimes we're the last face that you see, even though you'll never remember us. We are a very important part of that team, so we do take it very seriously, and it's very important to us. So, thank you.
Thank you. And so that Connie can properly do our records, will you please give your first and last name and your address, please? Because I want us to go into our minutes.
My name is Nicole Bates. My address...I travel, so...
Make something up, we won't know the difference.
My most recent address was 1712 Bradley Flane in Tequila, I think.
Perfect. Present this to you. We congratulate them on that, and I'll put on my glasses to give you this. It says, whereas the Cartersville Women's Club, a member of the Georgia Federation of Women's Clubs, is dedicated to community improvement by enhancing the lives of others through volunteer service, whereas the Cartersville Women's Club affiliated with the state organization, GFWC of Georgia, was founded in 1895 in the Northwest District, one of six districts in the state. The GFWC of Georgia has approximately a hundred and five clubs with a membership of approximately twenty-seven hundred members, all being united by a desire to create a positive change. And whereas the twenty-five-member-strong Cartersville Women's Club was chartered in June of 1966, and is now celebrating fifty years as a nonprofit volunteer service organization, these women are dedicated to providing their service to the people in both Cartersville and Bartow County. Whereas the list of all the programs and community involvement of our club, of our local club, is too extensive to list here, but does include sponsoring student art competition, helping with Lake Altoona cleanup, sponsoring a scholarship program for adult women, assisting with scoliosis screening, donating to Samaritan's Purse, and Hyfer International Project, donating to the Wounded Veteran Initiative, supporting K-9 companions, and lastly, addressing domestic violence. The Cartersville Women's Club hosts a fundraising tee with all the proceeds going to the Tranquility House. Now therefore, in celebration of the Cartersville Women's Club 50th Anniversary, I, Matthew J. Santini, Mayor of the City of Cartersville, use this means to honor the members past and present for their dedication and personal involvement in the leadership and improvement of our community, and proclaim September 15th of 2016 as Cartersville Women's Club Day. Would any of you all like to step forward and say some words about your organization? Improv to you? Make you sing for your supper. And again, for Connie, if you're going to speak, I need your name and your address for our minutes, please.
I'm Joan Maples, and my address is 10 Buckingham Court in Cartersville. And we are a service organization, as he said. The ladies here this evening, we didn't bring all twenty-five, but we did bring the executive board that are here with me, and we did bring one of our members who has been in the club for forty years, and that's Mrs. Joene Walnack.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now for a picture that will feature four of the most many roses. Present this to you, and John Lilly's going to take our picture. Unfortunately, because you've got to stand next to me, and I'm going to do this right here. There you go. Thank you so much. All right, Mr. Minino, we have a couple of first reading of ordinances. If you'll get us started with those, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The first one is Chapter 6, Article 10, the unfit building and structures ordinance. There is going to be an addition proposed to that for blighted property. That particular ordinance is what the city utilizes when they have to go through a condemnation process and procedure. Most of that stuff is staying the same in the first section of the ordinance. Keith has updated it based on some changes, and state law did change to allow for some tax levies for blighted structures in the city or in certain jurisdictions. So it's a tool that we're going to add to our particular ordinance that we're already utilizing. With that, there is a tax penalty imposed on blighted properties and going through certain procedures and processes. We think this could help us get some structures updated or torn down. Additionally, there's also some tax credits built in there for people who actually look to upgrade or fix it and bring it out of the blighted condition that it's in. So it just adds an additional tool to what we're trying to do, and we recommend your approval of this amendment to this ordinance.
Thank you. Randy, is there any questions or discussion on this item?
I would just add that within council's goals this year, there is one that deals with enforcement of code and appearances relative to code enforcement carried, so this is in compliance with that.
Motion to approve.
Hold, hold, hold. That's okay.
First reading.
This is the first reading. It's okay.
We're good.
It's A-OK.
I'm still going to vote for it.
Well, that's good. She called first for the next meeting, Carrie did. So, is there any discussion on this particular item for the first reading? Thank you. We'll go to the next one, Ms...no, actually, it's not you.
Yeah, David's going to handle the next.
Mr. Archer, you're going to handle that next item relative to the tourist accommodation and extended stay rentals.
Yeah, this is a proposed amendment to the existing ordinance relating to hotels and motels, and deletes the existing ordinance in its entirety, and proposes certain minimum standards with regards to the operation of tourist accommodations and extended stay rentals. And I use the word tourist accommodation because that's what the state statutes and regulations refer to these as. It adds additional requirements and minimum standards to the operation of those facilities in a method by which the city code enforcement officers can have access to and inspect when needed, and if violations are found, to make citations and bring charges in municipal courts. None of that exists in our existing ordinance.
Okay. Any questions or need for clarification on that?
I would just add, again, within your goals, there's pursuing every avenue of enforcement of hotel code violations and paying hotel motel taxes. We've done a preliminary audit through a contractor with GMA, and I've copied you on that, and this is another step on the code side. And I'd also add, too, that we're working in conjunction with the local schools that are concerned about the condition of these properties and the conditions within which some families and students are being housed.
Thank you. Again, this is a first reading. We'll take this up for final consideration on our next meeting. But Ms. Tate, you have a question?
I do have a question. Randy, you and I discussed briefly, and maybe you've had a chance to look it up, in our ordinance, do we have a percentage of the rooms that can be extended stay?
Up to ten percent.
Up to ten percent.
And it's Mr. Archer that alluded to. This ordinance will cover anything, whether it's extended stay...
Yeah, this does not distinguish between them.
So this kind of does away with that, because they'll be treated the same.
But a typical hotel can...
They're right of entry.
But your question that you were asking me earlier, up to ten percent of the hotel rooms in any hotel can be utilized for some extended stay. Anything more than that, then you start considering it as an apartment or a different type of facility.
So I know the ordinance is us, but do we actually enforce that, or is it the Health Department, or who actually looks into it?
That we could actually enforce. Now, there's been maybe two hotels built since those particular zoning ordinance changes or amendments occurred, and those were both on Main Street, and neither of the ones on Main Street, if we had any calls or concerns or complaints about. So we'd have to look into that other issue of whether certain aspects are grandfathered or not, but that won't affect the ordinance that Mr. Archer had explained.
Now, I didn't realize that this ordinance completely replaced the other one, David, so I'm going to even look at it more carefully, because the previous ordinance, it was just a piece of it replaced.
It really had more to do with licensing and very little to do with minimum standards. Had some, but very little. I've drastically added to that, and I've drawn a lot of this from the state statutes and regulations, and I've used those as a guide to add things here. And I think it's a very well-drawn ordinance.
Yes, and it's...
You should have been back since you drew it.
David, if you are looking at twenty rooms, I mean, you just stand there and count a long motel, and there's maybe people cooking outside of four or five, is that the visual or is it going inside the building, or is it when they check in?
This gives us the authority to go inside, if you mind.
This gives us the authority to go inside a room, and it even has a provision that if, at a reasonable time, under reasonable circumstances, the operator or owner of the tourist accommodation refuses to allow us to go in the room, that in and of itself is a violation for which they can be prosecuted.
And this also governs numbers in the room, not only staying there, but congregating in there as well. And as we discussed earlier, legals read that the state law is that the county's got the ability to do this now if it's a milestone.
So if fire went there for a reason, and it was a cooking problem or something, then do they automatically turn that into code enforcement? I mean, no?
No, no, no. And it's also provided that any law enforcement officer has access into the room, and it's a violation to refuse access.
What about the renter? The renter refused access to the room?
I beg pardon?
The renter refused access to the room?
Well, it wouldn't go into a room when somebody's in there.
You're talking about...
They're inspecting empty rooms, not rooms that are occupied while somebody's in there. Let me give you an example, and this is an actual example. I won't say who saw this, but somebody I know very well saw this and told me about it. Went into a room just to see what was there. The fire alarm had been painted over, probably ten or fifteen years ago. I mean, it was very flaky paint. Fire alarm didn't work. Well, that's under this ordinance, that's a violation, and we can make a charge for it. Previously, that was not something we could make a charge for.
Well, there are a whole set of fire things that the chief can enforce. There are a whole set of fire codes.
I guess where I'm getting confused is, is we haven't had any control of the inspection, so to speak, until this ordinance. Who is supposed to have been inspecting these tourists?
The Health Department. And they do inspect on a periodic basis.
So this just gives us more opportunity to, whenever we so choose.
Surprise inspections.
But they didn't inspect by numbers. They just inspected...
This gives us a little bit more teeth to inspect those, and again, make no bones about it, I mean, there are certain places that are being...there are some of the most needy among us who are staying in these kind of hotels. It's the only level between them and homelessness. And for...but those people are also worthy of living in a place that's safe and provides a little bit of dignity. On more than one occasion, when you get a picture sent to you of what's going on inside these rooms, or what kind of conditions people are being forced to live in, my hope isn't to...my hope, number one, is that this will encourage those properties that are running businesses that aren't allowing people to live in dignity, that they'll do a little better job with their properties, and if not, then there's other alternatives.
And we ought to distinguish, too, between those and others. This is not a blanket statement about the quality of hotel rooms.
No, not at all.
In Cartersville, because the majority of them are fine.
And I think everybody up here knows, I mean, it's been a priority of ours for several years, and now, you know, sometimes it takes a little bit longer to move in that direction.
It's in your goals this year.
Now we've got something that staff was able to move on, and I'm real happy that we're doing that, and trying to protect some of the most needy among us. Anything else relative to that? All right, we do have Ms. Reed, you're up now, please. Creation of a festival zone?
Hello, Mayor and council. So for this item, I am requesting the creation of two festival zones for rental events that will be taking place, that we will be hosting downtown. The first will be on Sunday, October 9th, a fundraising barbecue lunch for the Good Neighbor Homeless Shelter. It's going to have food and drink provided by Johnny Mitchell's Smokehouse, and it will be held in Friendship Plaza, so that will be the area of the festival zone. The second event will be in April of next year, so April 1st of next year, it's a Saturday. The Friday before that, it will be a Georgia Barbecue Association sanctioned competition. And then the next day, Saturday, will be the barbecue festival with vendors, music, craft beer, and an award ceremony, and that is going to be requested for the entire downtown square on both sides of the tracks. And we have had police and Public Works and fire both review the application and the road closures, and they have approved this. I've also had word from the police chief in the city where this event has already been held, assuring us of the event producers' willingness to work with all of the people involved, the quality of the event, and the fact that they had no trouble with any of the participants, or any rowdy or inappropriate behavior. So this is what we believe to be a very good event and a good fit for Cartersville and downtown.
Very good. So before you, council, is the resolution for the creation of two festival zones? Any discussion, or if not, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I will take a motion to add an item to the agenda.
Same age.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item is added. Continue.
Thank you very much. So this is an item that came to us, another event that we will be hosting, and this was prior to, well, subsequent to the agenda being set. So this is an event that will be hosted by a food truck called Julian's Kitchen. It's one that has been active particularly in the downtown area recently, but they're trying to do sort of a formal dining event. They will be selling tickets for a four-course meal with music and wine to be held in an outdoor environment, so our Friendship Plaza area, and that will be on October 15th. It's a fairly simple event. We're going to have the drinks provided by one of our downtown vendors, Olive Tree and Vine, and it should be pretty straightforward.
Okay. So I'll take any further discussion. A motion would need to be approval, would be...Mr. Archer, help me with the wording on that, please.
Subject to the proper required paperwork being prevented and approved by the planning office.
What was the date you suggested?
That's going to be October 15th, if council approves.
I make a motion to approve, subject to whatever I said.
All right. You got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Mr. Sanders, and then Mr. Porter.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is just an annual certification of the community rating system, which is, means we participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, and it's something we just need the mayor's signature on once a year.
Very good. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Porter, you're up. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. We're going to change the order of these. We're going to talk about the Vintage Hill Property Swap Agreement first, please, sir.
Yes, Mayor. As discussed in the work session, basically, this first item on the agenda that we talked about is a property swap, Village Hill. Currently, right now, we've been working with a developer out there who wants to place a road, Village Hill Drive, between Old Mill Road and 61113. That's the location of the future fire station, number three, that the city owns the property for. We've gone through the steps. They've gone through the plan review process and met with all utilities and worked through the details to make sure it meets our needs, and also where our utilities were placed along that road. Outlet number one, you can see in the yellow border, is a city-owned property. On the right side, Outlet One is where our property currently owns. The owner of the developer wants us to swap Outlet One with Outlet One B. Basically, it just shifts the way our fire station's going to be by putting in that road. Once they develop that road and meet our specifications, actually, they'll donate the road back to the city anyway, so we're really getting that property back as well. But for the time being, they're going to put in the detention pond as part of the agreement up to thirty thousand dollars. We'll pick up the cost if it goes above thirty thousand, up to sixty thousand, and then if it goes above that, we'll work out the details. We don't anticipate it to be that high. But this is, again, a future that helps with the fire station, allows Chief Carter and his staff to exit on Village Hill Drive once the developer builds that road, get some easy access to 61113 or to Old Mill Road. And this is brought for you. The city attorney's been working on this agreement, so right now, the recommendation is to pass this, subject to the city attorney and the city engineer reviewing and approving this document.
Thank you.
So we think we're going halves on the storm range?
We don't anticipate it, but that's the way it's written, so they're picking up the first thirty thousand. We really anticipate the cost being less than thirty thousand.
Any questions for Mr. Porter on this item? If not, motion's in order.
I make a motion to approve, subject to the city attorney and engineer, working out the details with the attorney.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue, please.
Yes, the second item is, is part of this, is Georgia Power has the power lines running through their property on the lower end close to Old Mill Road. We had to work out the agreement to them, be able to put our detention pond and our fire station parking lot under there, as well as our underground utilities. So this is, as long as the property swap agreement is agreed to and work the details out with the city engineer and city attorney, then the encroachment agreement, I would recommend approval of that as well.
No cost.
No cost.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dan. Mr. Anderson, that's the next three, I believe.
Okay, yes, sir, Mayor and council. This first item is for, which one is the first item? The agreement with the Etowah Area Consolidated Housing Authority. This is our third agreement we've had with them. This one is for the repair of the roof at the J. H. Morgan Gym, which is owned by the housing authority, but is very important for our programs. We do youth and adult basketball in that program. The housing authority took bids for the repair of this, and that bid came in at thirty-two thousand, six hundred dollars, and in this agreement, we would split that cost with them. The city's cost would be sixteen thousand, three hundred dollars, as laid out in this agreement. This is a budgeted item for Parks Recreation Department, and I recommend approval.
Any discussion on this item? And if not, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue, Greg.
Yes, sir, Mayor. This is an invoice for crushed stone that was used for the creation of the Pine Mountain West Trailhead Parking Area expansion. The Public Works hauled and spread and packed, and did a great job, I might add, Mr. Sanders. Over one million tons, over one million pounds of crushed stone. The original invoice called for the price per ton being fifteen seventy-five. I did speak to them, and they reduced their cost down to twelve fifty per ton, and at the time of the agenda, I didn't have the rebuild, but this invoice now is six thousand, four hundred, twenty dollars and thirty-four cents. I recommend that we pay that invoice.
Any discussion?
As one who uses that facility, I'm glad they're expanding the parking lot, because people are parked all over everywhere.
It is. It was during the, well, on weekends especially, they park on both sides of the highway, and if we had to get an emergency vehicle in there, it just wouldn't be possible.
It's getting a lot of use, and once again, got to give her kudos today for putting the whole thing together, and the family that gave it to her.
Amendment to that. Anybody want to pay for that crushed stone?
I do.
I'd be glad to. Make a motion.
I'd offer a prayer of motion.
So I've got a motion and a second, right there, I think.
Yes.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And maybe a thank you to Dave and I, sir.
Yes, sir, Mayor and council. Our next item is the replacement of the wind screens, tennis wind screens at Dellinger Park. These that are up now have, really should have been replaced last year, but it was not in our budget. I did budget it this year. I took bids out, sent bids out. I'll receive two bids back. I recommend the low bid from Windscreen Factory of Dallas, Georgia, in an amount of six thousand, fifty... I recommend the low bid from Windscreen Factory of Dallas, Georgia, in an amount of $6,050, and it is a budgeted item.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions for Greg on this? If not, a motion?
Motion to approve the low bid.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Chief Carter?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We respectfully requesting permission to order two vehicles as approved in our FY 1617 budget. These two vehicles, the first one will be an SU vehicle that's utilized by the command staff and battalion chief. The second is a pickup truck that's utilized by the training division. Once these vehicles, if approved and ordered and received and put in the field, we'll be surplusing out a 2001 Dodge Ram and also a 2004 Crown Victoria, removing those for our fleet. We attempted to get the bids and quotes out to as many vendors as possible. We actually hand-delivered quote packages to all of our local vendors. And then in addition to that, we also went online with the standard process that Mr. Reinhardt and his staff used. And we only had two vendors that actually returned bids based upon these two specifications. Of those two vendors, there was only one vendor that actually met the specifications as written out, in particular, the electrical systems of the vehicles needed to be in a minimum of a 200-amp alternator system, and only one vendor could and would be able to meet that for us, to meet our needs. So therefore, we respectfully requesting a funding for a total to Prater Ford of $67,542.88 for two vehicles. In addition to that, for our lighting, emergency warning sirens, and radio packages, it would go to Cusa Valley Communications for a total price of $18,499.12. Then the lettering for these two vehicles would be locally to Martin Neon Science for a total of $1,500, for a total of $87,542, which is $2,458 below our budgeted amount. This would be lease pool.
The motion needs to include lease pool in it. Do you want to go ahead and have a surplus of vehicles now so you don't have to come back in, or is that a separate thing?
It's really however you want to handle it. I mean, we are still utilizing those vehicles now. We're still utilizing those. Yeah, we're still using those until we get these other ones in.
Include lease pool in the motion.
All right. Ready for a motion? Everybody wants to throw one their way?
Motion to approve the purchase of Prater Ford with the addition for the lighting and so forth, and through lease pool.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief. And Mr. Hasselbruck?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The electric department needs to replenish our transformer inventory, and we put out bids that meets our specifications for the size we need. And we got the bids back, and we're recommending the low-cost bidder would be Anexter. The unit costs $5,873, and this is a budgeted item. And that's what we're recommending to accept the low-cost bid.
Okay. Any questions on this? And if not, a motion?
Motion to approve.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Verstalpena approached us. They're making, having an expansion in the industrial park, and they need to expand their electrical facilities, and they're on a quite tight timeline, mid-December. They need electrical power. So we put bids out, we got bids back, and the low-cost bidder could not meet the timetable for this. But we're recommending that Gresco Company be awarded the purchase of the three transformers for a total of $54,765 for total purchase price for all three. And they would be able to meet that December, mid-December timeline, and that's what we're recommending. This is also a budgeted item.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this item?
Just a question, Mayor. Don, this was a budgeted item in anticipation of...
Yes, ma'am. We knew they were expanding, and after this expansion, we do know there's three additional buildings to be built, probably in the 2017, 2018 timetable. And we've, you know, we'll be budgeting in anticipation of that need also.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Second.
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we do the finance report, Mr. Riggs, if you could step forward and give us a little bit of an update. I've asked Mr. Riggs to kind of give us, update the council and the community on the progress we're making in finding a new home for the gas department after our sinkhole situation.
Can you find the gas picture?
We are currently exploring the option of putting the gas department on some property that the city already owns on Old Mill Road, right next to where the Shaw Industries plant is. So, Mr. Riggs, if you'll kind of go through the layout and design of this piece of property.
On the right side, that would be our offices, our storage, our shops, garage to park our vehicles. Over on the left side, there's a 10,000-square-foot building that would replace the storage that Public Works Electric and Fiber had. And then the fuel pumps are behind that. We have actually two detention ponds with a walking trail around the big one, and it's a little bit over 2,000 feet, the walking trail. And there'll be fountains, aerators, and those to keep the water in motion, and it will be a permanent pond.
And everything around that property is gonna be screened, as Mr. Minio said, eight foot tall is the standard for screening trees.
Yeah, there'll be fences and then trees to screen it.
And again, Councilman Stepp, who was unable to be here tonight, he and I, we... The city had sent out letters to adjacent property owners just to let them know what the city's considering relative to relocation of the gas department, and again, wanted to make sure council was updated, wanted to make sure the community knew what direction we were going in. But, you know, a rather extensive look at other locations to find a piece of property that was close to the city. The other piece of property that we looked at were not real close to the rest of our operations. And instead of spending $700,000 or $800,000 on a piece of property, I thought it was kind of prudent for us to look at property that we currently own, and that would be a good fit organizationally, at least in my mind, for that. Something that Mr. Riggs felt would be good for the function and operation of the gas department. So again, just wanted to make council aware of it, wanted to let the public know about it. If you want to have more information on it, again, Monday night at 6:00, 6:00 p.m. here in council chambers. And by the way, thank you, Gary. All right. Mr. Reinhardt, we're ready for the financial report. When you're doing double duty over there. Got to run the computer and... Paul, I made it just earlier, I think, a little earlier than you see it. Well, that's great.
Yeah, that's so much better.
This is why Channel 4 no longer exists.
That was terrible.
That was snarky. Jason will get me later for that one, trust me. Thanks, Jason. That looks a lot better.
On behalf of the state council, we apologize for our mayor's snarky comments.
All right, Tom, go ahead. Bring us over here.
Honorable Mayor and Council, we'll be looking at the July 2016 and comparing to July 2015. And the general fund revenues decreased over last July by about $71,000. Expenses also decreased by $1,500. Three areas of revenue I look at in the general fund on a monthly basis are local office and sales tax. You can see we've got a $25,000 decrease. Police fines and forfeiture, we also have a decrease of about $7,000. And billing permits and inspection fees, we have an increase of about $1,000. The water and sewer fund revenues increased over last July by $42,000. Expenses increased by $443,000. This is due to an increased personnel, combined with decreased operating expenses and decreased debt service expenses. And the gas fund revenues decreased by about $100,000. Expenses have increased by $71,000 due to increased cost of purchased gas. I'm sorry, due to decreased purchase of... Increased purchase of gas. And then the electric fund revenues have increased over last year by $54,000. Expenses decreased by $125,000. This is due mainly to decreased cost of purchasing electricity and decreased capital expenses. Stormwater fund revenues increased over last year by about $7,000. Expenses decreased by $6,000 due to decreased operating expenses. And the solid waste fund revenues increased over last year by $5,000, and expenses decreased by $32,000, and this is due mainly to decreased operating expenses. And finally, the fiber optics fund revenues increased over last year by $18,000, while expenses have also decreased by $10,000, and this is mainly due to decreased debt service expenses. That is my report for the evening.
And this is, I mean, pretty much where we usually sit in July anyway, right?
Well, this is the first month of the fiscal year, so we kind of wipe the slate clean. And typically, you find that the general fund will run a deficit until the property taxes come in later in the calendar year. And of course, Gary doesn't make a whole lot of money in the hot weather. He's got to let it get cold before he can turn that deficit around there. The only other thing I would add is restricted and unrestricted cash is up slightly.
Any questions on the finance report? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other business that needs to come before council this evening? I will just reiterate comments from earlier tonight relative to the Kamatsu parking lot, the expansion at Pine Mountain, and thank again, for the record, the folks at Kamatsu who continue to be great partners in having that recreational facility grow around them. And kudos to the recreation department and to Tommy Sanders with Public Works for putting that together in such quick order. And I failed to do it at the actual event, but it's been kind of mumbled a few times. But David Archer, who, I want to personally thank you for the time and the effort that you've put into really making that whole thing exist. Your time with Tony Smith and his family and coordinating all that. It really is, the fact that we got to expand that parking lot for so many people that are making use of that recreational facility. I know it's got to be a source of pride for you, because it's a source of pride for the entire community, so I want to thank you.
You know, I really want to go back up there, but I can't find anybody with a helicopter.
I'm just a chairlifter, man.
We'll find a way.
Which is...
Mayor, I'd like to recognize someone.
Go right ahead.
I'd like to recognize the governor recognized, our own Ellen Archer with tourism here in Bartow County, and Tom Shinnell with the Booth Museum as outstanding in the state. And of course, that brings so many good things to the city of Cartersville, so kudos to both of those folks.
Very good. Anything else before council tonight? If not, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yes, I moved.
Didn't get a haram by that guy?